Good evening. Thank you for having me tonight at the school board meeting. Thanks to Dr. Carlin for reminding me. I've been doing so many of these lately that my schedule is jam-packed. I got the kids home and I get a text message to remind me that I was supposed to be here. So, I'm here. Thank you for having me. I appreciate it. I really wanted to come before all of you because I have spent the last three weeks going to all of the schools in Garden City and kind of our surrounding area to visit with 3rd grade to 12th graders on this particular issue and survey them on what they want us to do in Garden City. A little bit of background, the city commission, which we'll get to that, but the city commission wanted to get some feedback on what to do and somebody said maybe we should talk to a few kids and then the conversation kind of spun into talking to as many kids as we could feasibly survey. And so, that's what led me here. I do have some feedback for you guys on that that's kind of hot off the press and so I'll share that at the end. But I'm gonna start out by showing you guys a quick video and then we'll jump into the presentation. Hopefully we have something. So as of tomorrow, you can go to the city's website and do a survey. And tomorrow you'll also be able to see data from the schools. We did have about 3,200 students fill out surveys. A lot of information that we got from them, including comments, so they all got comment sections on a couple of different questions and so it was really interesting. They all saw this video to start out with and then they all heard the same presentation that you guys are gonna hear. Okay, so the big pool. The big pool spends $3,337 a day during the summer when it's open. That is labor, chemicals, and water essentially. That's where that money goes. $450,000 a summer. It's about $60,000 more a summer than the water park in Salina if you've ever seen that, just as a comparison. But that is just operating expenses. We spend another $300,000 or so on projects. So things that have to get done, cracks in corners or leveling or refinishing the bottom of the pool so that it holds water better than it would if we didn't do that. I'm not going to say so that it completely holds water because it doesn't, but whatever needs to be done, crack diving boards, you name it. We need a new chemical building which we didn't get to last year which is about another $80,000. So, we started with that as being kind of our baseline of where our problem was and then started to jump into the water issue and how much water we were actually losing. And after some analysis realized that on average it's about 200,000 gallons a day of water that we're losing. So, not conserving water very well either and over the course of the summer about 27 million gallons of water. So those two things, I think, should be enough, but they weren't because the pool is so loved. I mean, people really love that, the idea, those pictures that you saw at the beginning of the presentation. It's kind of this icon of Garden City. And so then we started looking at, okay, so who's using it? I would go out there while I was managing, the manager, and see that there were 100 people there or less. It just literally looked like no one was there. And the 330 people that are going, if we have that many people in there, they would have a 12 by 12 area all to themselves. Basically 144 square feet of water all to themselves because that's how big the pool is in relation to those that are using it. So, we're spending a lot of money, wasting a lot of water, and no one's using it. And so the conversation with the commission really was, so now what? Do we keep doing this? Do we do something else? How do we have this conversation? How do we go down this road? And so, it really started with the kids in the school district and that's where we decided that if we could get the kids to tell us what they wanted, maybe the community would kind of follow suit and say, okay, maybe that's what we want too. So as we kind of went down this road, we decided that we had to come up with an idea to recognize the history of the big pool because it was important to so many people. I don't know what that looks like. We're hoping to get feedback from the community on that, but we talked about preserving the bathhouse for entry gates to a new facility. We talked about preserving it as a museum and having all of the old portraits and those kinds of things inside so you could go and look at it if you were there visiting the new facility or whatever we turned that facility into. There's been several ideas for that. Or third option, maybe take the inside out and make it kind of like the picnic shelters in the parks where you can rent out that shelter and use it for barbecues or birthday parties or whatever it may be. But preserving the bathhouse because if you noticed in that video, the bathhouse is the only thing that even remotely looks the same. The pool's been filled with concrete, the area, the trees, everything is different. The bathhouse, other than the mural being painted on it, is essentially exactly the same as it was when they built it. So that was kind of the first thing we talked about. The next one was developing a service that more people would use, not just kids that are, you know, in that seven to 12-year-old range that could be dropped off by their parents at the pool and left there. That maybe more adults, people who have grandkids, little kids, you know, kind of the whole spectrum of people could use whatever service we decide to create. Water usage and water conservation, obviously a big deal because we're not doing that now and that's one of the city's goals and so trying to figure out how we do that. And then for me, one of the big things was engaging as many people as possible. And so that's kind of what started out this survey journey. So as we started to talk about objectives, we went into locations, was the location where it currently is. The only location, what if we did multiple facilities, what if there were ideas or splash parks or community pools or multiple pool locations or mega splash parks or whatever it may be. And so we sent the parks department out to look at all of our existing parks and the areas that they serve to see if there were things that we could do in certain areas. And I will tell you, for example, this is just one, Gertrude Walker. That school, hands down, the most diversity I saw in the entire school district, anywhere that I was. I saw so much diversity there and I was talking to different teachers about what those kids do and what their parents do and kind of that area. And that empty lot on the corner of the playground, which you'll get to see a picture of in a minute, at Ethan Emerson, is just dirt next to the playground and if we could do something there, that really targets a lot of kids who could walk, who could bike when parents aren't home. And so, that was a really interesting conversation. I got to have several of those in different schools. But that one really stuck with me as a need, so I think it'll be interesting to see that. So the current lot, obviously huge location, you can do a lot here. Medium-sized water park would fit here, another pool of similar size, you could mix and match with a pool and a splash park or mega splash park. You could go back, the kids really threw out a lot of different uses, so not just water. They threw out things like laser tag and skating rink and miniature golf, sand volleyball, all of the things that didn't necessarily have to do with swimming. Not that they wanted to eliminate swimming entirely, but that they wanted to see some sort of other use or other activity that they could do. And this lot would be big enough that you could do a couple of different things. This is the location I was talking about at Ethan Emerson. So the playground is already there, if you can see it, and then we own the lot from the tree line all the way to Emerson Street, which is huge. On this picture, it may not look that big, but it is massive. And it would be, if you ever get a chance to drive over there and take a look at it, it would be a great spot or something. Whether it be a splash park, a mega splash park, even a community pool, although those kind of have some high liability, which we'll talk about shortly. And parking might be somewhat of an issue, but for kids that live close to here, that would be a great use for this piece of land. Southeast Community Park, this is another area that doesn't have a lot of things for this group of kids to do. So this is East Garden Village, Wilson addition, just south of the newest houses being built. The city commission is already putting a playground here and there is space for us to include a splash park in that. And so, just one more activity for kids in this area. And both schools I visited, V.O. and Charles Stone, were super excited that there could be potentially something that close to where they go to school. I think from hearing what they were saying is there's a lot of alone time after school and in the evenings and stuff and mom and dad are able to transport them and so something they could walk to would be really helpful. Rotary Park, Third Johnson, this one has been kind of controversial among the kids, actually. I thought this was a great space, huge, it's kind of in the center of town, I thought, oh, this would be perfect. This is apparently highly used for soccer and so the kids were adamant that we not do anything with this for fear that it might interfere with soccer and that's great. That's why we're having these conversations. So they can tell us things that we may not know. I didn't know that. They did ask about maybe there being the possibility of like a skinny spray pad or something that after soccer games they could run through and pull off or, you know, something like that. And so, I don't think all is lost here, just nothing too major. Dean Wiley, hands down most popular park of any park that we showed the kids at every single school that we went to. Either their parents did activities here, baseball, softball, they did activities, baseball, softball, snow cone shop, playground. It just seemed like a place that a lot of people went. I mean, all the kids had experiences of going there and rated it. Even the kids who actually didn't live close to this park rated it as the park that was closest to their house, which was interesting. I thought that was kind of fascinating, actually. But yeah, at this place, we have some land space that we could actually put a splash park or a community pool. Harold Long Park, the walking park, Alta Brown, I believe, is the elementary school that's closest to this one. And they liked, of course, liked this location because they could walk there, but we could also put a splash park at this location. Downtown, this is the one that everybody's kind of gone downtown, splash park or pool downtown, what do you mean? And so kind of what we were thinking is if you've ever been to Boulder on Pearl Street, the kind of nine-by-nine broads area that the kids are all running into each other and knocking each other down and playing in the water and all the adults are just kind of gathered around, hanging out, watching them, that's more what we were thinking. And downtown actually had that idea concept before we ever started this process and so we just added this in as part of the discussion to see what people think and see if they like the idea. And Mike Beerhead is all about electricity and lights and so he said, oh, and at night we could add color and have kind of this like watercolor show to kind of beautify downtown in the evenings. So, just another idea. So then we started talking concepts and so when we started talking concepts, this was staff talking about what we could do or how we could do it. We looked at real communities that had done projects recently that we could take inflation into account and try and come up with some ideas. This is not all the ideas. This is definitely not all the ideas that I heard from the kids once they started going to schools, but this is what we started with. So this is kind of, if we took out the big pool and we went back with a similar-sized pool, not as large of a deep end, but, you know, keeping with the features of a competition lanes, baby pools, zero-depth entry, large slides, larger bathhouse, room for concessions and bathrooms, that sort of thing. And like I told the kids, these can be themed any way we want them. So this has a train and, you know, these colors, but we could go with rhinos or elephants or some other history piece of Garden City that we wanted to depict. I mean, really, really anything that we want. This would cost Garden City currently about $6 million to build and this facility charges $5 to $6 to get in. And just to highlight, most of these facilities that we're talking about building, we're talking in the $0 to $3. So a splash park or mega splash park, free to use, a pool like this probably $2 to $3. You go much higher than that and you're gonna price a lot of our community completely out of it. There will be no accessibility and so we really have to think about that as we're deciding what we do. Operation costs on this are about half what we're spending on the big pool currently and of course the capital costs on this are essentially nothing at this point because this facility is only 10 years old. So they're not doing a whole lot of upkeep other than their normal facility maintenance. Another piece to add is the conversation that I had with Melinda about using the funds that we're currently spending on the big pool, what that would translate to in the sense of if we use those same dollars and on a geo bond or something like that. And it worked out to be in like the $10 to $15 million range depending on how long, all of those things. And so, this is a $6 million project and so that kind of gives you an idea of where we would be. And I tried to do it with the kids like a math problem and gave each of the kids $10 to $15 and then told them that each project like this was a $6 project and how much money they had left, what other projects they could do. And they kind of got a kick out of that, doing it sort of like a menu style and picking their project. This one, this is what we were talking about, if you put pools in parks, super, I guess boring is what I would say. No bling, slide, diving board, one to two lifeguards, free to maybe a dollar to get in, no concession stands, kids bring their own food, bring their own drinks. These are high liability because let's, if we have three or four of them, police have gotta keep kids out of them after hours, you know, or before hours before they open. Most communities are going away from this idea, but we didn't want to not include it because it is still happening. People are still doing it and still using it as a way to get communities and neighborhoods together. So we included it. This runs about $500,000 apiece. This one has high operation costs because this is their main pool. This is their like main activity in FNC Kansas. So, they're small, so that's why their operation costs are a little bit smaller. This is what they do. Ours would be fairly minimal because we wouldn't have hardly any expense, no concession stand or anything like that. The next one is a community pool that's smaller than the first one, but larger than the last one. This is kind of what I talked to the kids about, if they're interested in having other activities at a pool, so if they think in their mind, I don't wanna go water park, I don't wanna go that far because kids can't afford it, but I wanna go, I want a lazy river, really, that's what I want, you know, like I heard that 100 times. So, maybe you build something simple like this, a $2 million facility and you add a lazy river and some of the extra things that the kids want and you get kind of that compromise in there. A facility that kids can afford to use, but maybe has some features that all kids want to do. So this one, $2 million, they charge $7 to get in, again, I think Garden City's in that $2 to $3 range and their operation costs are $210,000, which in comparison to ours, ours are around $450, not including capital expenses. Yeah, and we can customize it. I mean, really, the sky's the limit when you come to this kind of thing of what you want or how you want it, shape, size, slides, that's all chained it out. This is a splash park. I chose the ugliest one I could find. In all seriousness, we just wanted to go for the size. If Garden City did splash parks in the park, I would foresee not gray concrete, not gray features, that they would be themed after the school district or the school that they're closest to or the park that they're closest to and that they had features with colored concrete, which you'll see in the next slide. That makes the area really pretty. So as you were driving by, it catches your eye. It gives you something to look at other than just a dirt lot or a grassy area. These run about $1 million apiece to build. Operation costs on this, $21,000 of the $37,000 is concession stand. So really low to operate, especially if you don't do a concession stand, which I would not foresee that we would do. We did talk about maybe having a building so that, one of the kids at Horse Good brought up that a lot of the kids have different businesses where they would like to run a concession stand and make money and maybe we could trade them out to do that. I think we could have that conversation. It's just figuring into our expenses, we wouldn't do that. No lifeguards, just open kind of like a playground. Yeah, so, and free to use. I mean, that's the accessible part. Walk to, bike to, no cost. So this is a large acre splash park, which they call a mega splash park, which has taken out all of their community pools and replacing them with mega splash parks. And Centennial, Colorado, did this as sort of an experiment. They were a big city and they wanted to be a community. They wanted their people to get to know each other, spend time together and so they built this, free to use, surfing, slides, trees, towers you can climb, rope swings, you're wet the entire time, but no submersible water. They run it for about 12 hours a day. They reuse and re-treat the water. About $2.75 million to build, free to use. And they said they have people of all ages that pick up dinner and go here and eat their dinner next to this park and watch kids play. And so it really did create exactly what they were aiming at, which is bringing more people together and acting more like a community rather than a big city. And so, they've really been happy with it. Again, customizable, you can do colors, themes, whatever, and they're operating this huge space. I mean, you think of the area land size of like the big pool, that's how much land space they're using for their mega splash park. So huge spaces, really, really incredible, but really low operation expense. And then we have the water park. This is Salina. I chose Salina over Dodge. I know most of our kids are probably more familiar with Dodge, but I chose Salina because Salina actually did a better job with water and water use and water treatment and all of the things that they do dealing with water conservation. And so I chose them for that reason and I just think they did a really, really nice job. This is a $16 million project. Dodge in comparison, so you can, if you've been there, $10 million project, it's a little bit smaller and the features are kind of separated out. More chemicals, so a little bit higher operation expense. Admission prices to get in for something like this, this is the biggest problem I see with a water park, is $4 to $6. That's gonna price a lot of our families completely out of use for this and so I don't know what, I don't know what that looks like. But a lot of kids like this idea, I mean, like the idea, but I don't know if they like the actual application of it. And then a competition pool, this has created a lot of debate. But just how we went about it is an outdoor competition facility like we provide now for the swim teams to practice and compete. And these run about $500,000 apiece and obviously admission prices to get in would depend on if we actually used it as a swimming facility or we used it more as just competition and things like that or how we utilized it. As I went around to different schools, the high school, I obviously ran into a lot of swim team kids and a lot of swim parents and I actually held a community session this afternoon where one of those parents came and they are pushing very hard for an indoor facility of some kind. They really want that. They feel like to take the swim team to the next level, that's what they need and so they're really pushing for that and offered up some school land, so just so you guys are all aware. But yeah, that was not something we considered mainly because we didn't, it literally never crossed our mind. We never, our staff never thought of that being even something that people were looking for until we started going to the kids. And yeah, it was kind of a big deal. So, then going through to the schools, explaining to the kids why, why we want them to take the survey, why it's important. You know, a lot of them were like, hey, especially high schoolers, I'm not staying, why do I care? You know, and so we tried to go through with them, I get that you think you might not live here or you might not stay here, just give it time. You may change your mind, you may come back here. We hope that you do, that's why we're having these conversations with you. And this may be one of the only times that your community, and I appreciated one of the high school teachers telling her class, I'd lived in like six different communities and they have never asked anybody's opinion. And they're asking your opinion, like you're not even a voting agent and they're asking your opinion, you should take advantage of this. And so it was really nice to hear her kind of walk them through why that was important. But this is the spill that we gave them and then asked them to take the survey. And for the most part, I think almost all the kids did. The high schoolers were kind of the ones that, I'm not sure how many of them, we got into the survey process, but we did see a lot of them. We did see, I think, almost all of the high schoolers. So, it was a good experience. I want to also give a round of applause to Horse Good. They were incredible. I have never, I couldn't leave here without telling you that. I have never been to a school that is so well-operated. From the moment I walked through the door, they knew exactly who I was, they knew exactly where I needed to go and it was just like, I felt like I was at the airport being, you know, taken down to the airplane. It was amazing, it was incredible. I was so thankful for such a wonderful experience and I had great experiences all over the school district with different teachers and different principals and it was a wonderful experience. I'm so glad that I got to do it. So I appreciate all of you and Dr. Carlin and Renee Scott for facilitating it because it wouldn't have been possible otherwise then. And it was good and it's gonna really pay off for our commission to have this information. So, I know I've probably taken more of your time than you want. Please fill out the survey if you have a chance. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them or if you have thoughts, concerns, I'm happy to answer those as well.
You said we get to see some of the hot off the press.
Oh, yes. Yes. So, I actually got a text message. They're working on the student data tonight to get it ready for the pre-meeting tomorrow. And I said, well, if you get any of it, please send it because I'm gonna be at the school board meeting and so they did. So just a basic count, right now we have more than 134 references to a lazy river in the 3rd to 6th grade counts. That seemed to be like the number one thing that they were asking for, followed by skating. And that skating was split between ice and roller. And 7th to 12th grade, they were 100 references to skating, ice, or roller and then followed by a lazy river after that. And so, that's the first thing. The other thing you should find interesting is that maybe as the kids get older, as you go from 3rd grade to 12th grade, each grade here steps down their interest in swimming or water recreation at all or their interest in having anything related to water recreation, so.
Have you had any conversations with the Y? As they're increasing, you're finding the same challenges with their pool that you're experiencing with the big pool and it's become a huge financial drain on their resources and they're not sure, at least I understand that they're not sure what the long-term sustainability is of their facilities.
So I was asked by several people to come to the swimming on Saturday and just experience the swimming at the Y and so I'm going to do that. I also have sessions scheduled specifically with the Y and with Parrot Cove this week during the community presentations to talk to them one-on-one about the issues they're having and also the expectations they might have of us so that those can go before the city commission as well. So, yes, not yet, but yes, we are doing that.
So what's the goal of the city? Is to gather this information? Is the plan still open pool this summer?
Yeah, so the commission made a decision in the fall when this information came before them that they would open for the 2019 season, that they would go ahead and go through with the motion. I'm in the process of hiring managers, taking applications for lifeguards. We're going through all of the motions necessary to open this year. But in, so at the end of February, the community survey will close and they will have a pre-meeting in March, the second meeting in March, where I will present all of the data to them. Community, student, and I'll break it up into grades and I'll kind of give them the direction I believe the data is leading them for them to take with them and digest. They'll have about two to three weeks to go and talk to community members, to kind of talk to kids, do whatever they think is necessary to really digest that information and figure out where they stand. And then the first meeting in April, it will come on as a business item for them to make a decision. And when I say make a decision, it's, as I explained to the kids, it's not a, okay, here's a, water park is the overall one, and I'm using that one because it's easy because it's a singular facility, but water park is the overall decision from the community and the kids. So go build a water park. Like it's not gonna happen that quick. So if they make a decision that water park is the way to go, then of course we'll have to hire design professionals, architects, go out to do that and then after that we'll go out to bid for contractors and that sort of thing and figure out how to pay for it and all of those sorts of important details.
Hi, Jennifer.
Sure.
So to me, this model is civic arrangement. I mean, she went in every single building in the district, got input from kids. They're in the decision-making process. They're seeing how government works, how spending and finances work, budgeting works, water conservation. To me, this was like the perfect way to do a true cross-curricular lesson for community and school relationships. So thanks for the information.
I really enjoyed it. Though you guys might get a petition from like six high schoolers that want me to teach a class. So, if you see that petition, I have not okayed that with the city, but they were gonna start passing it around, so.
Pete, you might wanna talk to Matt Allen.
Yeah, so, thank you.
I really appreciate that too and it has like caused conversation in the home as well because I never knew my daughter was interested in ice hockey and she was like, I would love to play hockey, we need an ice rink. So, I think it was good for them to really digest the information and take it home, have conversations at home. So I know you put a ton. So I know you put a ton of work and time into that, so thank you so much for doing that for our kids.
I enjoyed it. I enjoyed it. I, they learned a lot too, in the sense of public versus private. I had a lot of kids ask for Chipotle, Chick-fil-A, Olive Garden. And I had to, we had to go down this whole road of explaining that those are private businesses and we're talking about public services and how we, how we do this thing. The other thing that we got out of this is I think I actually got high schoolers to believe that they should be watching every City Commission meeting because they had no idea about sports of the world or any of the things that were going on in Garden City. And they asked how they find out. I said, you just need to watch the City Commission meetings. And so I was going around in different classrooms helping them, because Facebook's not a thing with high schoolers anymore, apparently. It's now only Twitter or Snapchat. But I was getting them back on Facebook and liking the city's page and, you know, getting our updates and that sort of thing. So I may have created some followers a long way too, so it was good. So, thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, time for board of discussion. Lauren on the side?
Well, good segue. Civic engagement, my usual legislative coffee, I believe it's February 16th. It's in the pot at St. Catherine's, so if anyone can be there. Jerry Moran was actually here last Friday. I wasn't able to go, but it looked like they had a pretty good turnout. But if you're available, because I know there were a couple of issues that we talked about last board meeting, I think it was. This would be a good chance to talk to John, John, and Russ, so that's all I have.
Tim?
I had about nine items, but three board members gone, and I think I'm just going to hold off on it and bring them up at another meeting.
Well, then, our leader's got a handout back from the.
Yeah, so I'd say that we've done a lot of good things, and so it's good to hear.
Same up to Tim. I'd like to, you know, my thoughts on like ten or four or five or so.
Well, I'd like to plug the robotics competition. It's at the high school, so it's in town. It's at the high school this Saturday, I think 9:30 to 3:30, something like that, so.
8:30?
8:30? Okay. So check it out. It's really fun. You can do that, so. We had a lot of good presentations today. All right, well, the next board meeting will take place on Monday, February 18th, 2019, at 6:00 PM in the board meeting room at the Educational Support Center. Dr. Carlin, I lucked you out. I'm sorry, did you have something?
Yeah, a couple. First, I think when we did our board goals report, one of the topics of discussion came up on safety and security. We're required to do about 17 drills this year. I think we've calculated that like one every 11 days, something like that. And there has been, that has been noticed across the state. State Fire Marshal's office has come out with a recommendation to change that. That was actually apparently added to an appropriations bill at the end of the last legislative session. Nobody really knew it was in there. Nobody really likes it. So I think Senator Baumgartner, maybe as the Senate Education Committee, is chair of that committee. They're going to have a hearing as it gets on the 11th. State Fire Marshal has a new, has a proposal out, basically to do two tornado drills a year, and then three or four crisis drills or three or four fire drills, and have them alternate. So it's a total of nine drills in a year. That seems to be a little more appropriate, a little, you know, kind of more consistent with what we've known in the past. And so Mark and I have actually had some conversations about that. We'll probably be writing testimony for that committee in favor of supporting that, that plan. It's not in a bill form yet, but that, that would be a good way to kind of advocate maybe for something that is a little more reasonable. Also, there is Senate Bill 44. There's going to be a hearing on that this Wednesday. That is basically the state board's plan for finalizing school finance, putting that last inflation piece in the formula that the court said would, would, would make it all constitutional. There's a little bit of a price tag for it, so it's kind of all part of the conversation that's going on in DePica now. But that, that hearing happens on Wednesday. I know there are several groups planning on, on giving testimony. I'm working on some, but I got to have it in by noon tomorrow, so it, it would be written, written testimony only. But certainly, we would like to see that happen so we can move on, maybe put that chapter behind this and start focusing on other things about, about what we're doing with schools, so. So those things are going on. And then just, of course, congratulations to Ms. Scott. We certainly are going to miss her, and we appreciate her leadership. But we know that they could have made a better choice, so. That's all I got.
All right. On that note, then, make a motion to adjourn.
Does it?
All in favor, raise your hand. For both in size, is it?